Good evening.
Good evening.
All the meeting of Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Let's get this everyone. Mr. Brown has to meet him in approximately at halftime.
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you. I see all of you in the audience for a reason. But we'll make special note of the presence of the chairperson of the Liberty County.
Thank you. The Liberty County Board of Education, Ms. Lila Baker, please stand. Ms. Baker is, I'll say, retiring from her position after how many years?
Well, sixteen as board chair and thirty-one as her educator for forty-seven years altogether.
Let's appreciate her service if you would. We'll simply say, job well done. Job well done. Thank you so much for being here.
She's not gonna quit now. She's gonna...
Go fishing.
Yeah. No, she's... No, no, no.
I got you. Absolutely.
Let's see. We need to amend our agenda for board appointments. Is that right, Commissioner Gilligan?
Yes, sir.
So let's make that, if we will, board item seven F, board appointments. Can I have a motion to make that adjustment, please?
Move.
Second.
Second. All in favor, show of hands, please. Make that item seven is board appointments. I know we need to hear from Commissioner Jones. He's at work. Won't be able to be with us and maybe Commissioner Walden will join us shortly. So just to say that for the matter of record. All right. Pastor Henry Frazier Jr. is here, who will come down and lead us in our invocation, immediately followed by our pledge of allegiance. Please stand for the prayer and the pledge.
Chairman, if you will allow me just one space. Out of those forty-seven years, Ms. Baker, I was one of those students that she had to teach. And when you look at me, you look at what she's done.
What a heckin' there.
Believe me. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this time and that you granted to all of us to be in this one place at this one particular time. And we ask your blessing upon this meeting today, God, that you will make it more special than the rest, that you would do something in this meeting that has not been done in others. But more than important, God, you would grant wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. And not only that, God, but you would grant unity, as things come before the Congress, become before the people. God, that the right decision will be made, that it might not be one, but it might be done for all, that when the end of this meeting has been done today, that we will declare, God, you've been with us as we made the decision, and help us now to move forward. And I pray in our special blessing upon each of the councilmen, God, that you would give them the wisdom that they might find and do that which is pleasing in your sight. We ask this now in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the state of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, the agenda will require that we approve our minutes from the month of August.
No movement, Chair.
Motion and second, we approve the minutes. Ah, it says August, not September. Yeah, yeah. Everybody's good with the minutes?
Yes, sir.
So then, all in favor, show of hands, please. Two of us said two minutes as presented. Thank you. All right. Proclamations. We're proclaiming today. We have several on our agenda. Paint Liberty Pink, National Women's Small Business Month, and Save Our Next Generation Day. Mr. Brown, please.
Yes, sir. The first one is proclamation, Liberty County Board of Commissioners, Paint Liberty Pink Day. Whereas, while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains the most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second-leading cause of death among women in the United States. And whereas, each year, it is estimated that more than 220,000 women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and more than 40,000 will die as a result of the disease. And whereas, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to increase awareness about the disease. And whereas, during this month, we reaffirm our commitment to support breast cancer research and to educate all citizens about its risk factors, detection, and treatment. And whereas, as we display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing to raise awareness, we also support those courageously fighting breast cancer and honor the lives lost to the disease. And whereas, this October, we recognize breast cancer survivors, those battling the disease, their families and friends, who are a tireless source of love and encouragement, and applaud the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers, working to find a cure for this deadly disease. And whereas, Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity to unite all citizens in our community to prevent breast cancer deaths through increased education and regular screening. Therefore, I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of the Liberty County Commission, do hereby proclaim Friday, October 14th, as a day to recognize the efforts being made in our city and county. Therefore, Friday, October 14th, 2022, will be Paint Liberty Pink Day.
Would the committee please come forward? And I know there's a spokesman or someone in that group who will give us a brief statement. After that time, you'll come and join us on the podium, on the dais, as they would say. Dais, dais, dais.
Good evening.
Come on up, y'all. Don't leave. All right, well, good evening.
It was four years ago in October that I came in front of you all to name October 24th, at that time, 2019, Breast Cancer Awareness. And we started the proclamation because my sister Brenda passed away on March 24th, 2019. So when I came, and it was a very overwhelming day, because in the morning, we had the proclamation signing with the city, and then that evening with the county. And I never forgot, after everything was said and done, you said to me, Donald Lovett, Chairman, excuse me.
Right.
Tell me a little bit about your sister. And that always stuck with me. So thank you all so much for bringing this awareness to the citizens of Liberty County.
Thank you. And I learned this from Hermana Glass Hill, the little saying, say their names and they will live forever. If you all were coming up behind us here, and we'll take a group photo. Ms. Chalmers has given me a little doodad here to put in my... You know, Ms. Chalmers always has...
Her shirt also says, better because of bacon. That's body by bacon.
Commissioners, yes, sir. Come on in. And now, the one where I present.
The first one was signing, this one's the presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for what you do.
And then we music at the farmer's market.
Ah, okay. All right. Farmer's Market's gonna have some extra sauce to it, as they say, on Thursday. Thank you, ladies, again.
The next proclamation, Ms. Chairman, is Liberty County Board of Commissioners recognizing National Women's Small Business Month, whereas the Women's Business Ownership Act of 1988 allowed women to receive financial management and marketing assistance for their small businesses and startups. And whereas, by 2019, women-owned businesses represented 42% of all U.S. businesses and generated 1.9 trillion in revenue. And whereas, today, there are over 13 million women-owned businesses and counting in the U.S. And whereas, in Liberty County, by 2017, over 19% of businesses in operation were women-owned, and this number continues to grow. Therefore, I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of Liberty County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October as National Women's Small Business Month in Liberty County, to celebrate all the women-owned businesses that support our community, so executed on October 4th, 2022.
Okay. Who's representing that group?
And you're gonna have the same group as before, 'cause a lot of women-owned small businesses are...
Quite all right.
...small businesses are.
Quite all right. It's girl power day.
That's all I have to say.
I have to say, well, come on, okay? Yeah, you're right, they're all involved in business.
Any other female-owned small businesses, sir? Some more of the mayor's. Oh, well, that's some husbandsmen. He gave me that.
Everybody's in?
I think so.
The group has grown.
There you go.
There you go. Hold on.
You got it going on, man.
She knows. Freakishly long arm.
All right. Small businesses are fiber of our country. Sometimes we forget that. Not the big businesses, small businesses make up the majority of businesses in the country. Sometimes we lose track of that. Yeah. The mom and pops a lot of time. Thank you for what you do, keeping our business inventory up. All right. Next one, sir.
Next one, sir, is a proclamation for Save Our Next Generation Day. Whereas, Save Our Next Generation, S-O-N-G, is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization created to raise further awareness of bullying in our communities. And whereas, bullying is a form of aggressive behavior in which someone intentionally and repeatedly causes another person injury or discomfort. And whereas, bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, workplaces, and online through technology. And whereas, various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually. And whereas, children and adolescents who are bullied can experience negative physical, social, emotional, academic, and mental health issues. And whereas, millions of students skip school each year for the fear of being bullied, with an alarming rate of suicides and school shootings. And whereas, Save Our Next Generation is committed to bringing about change in our communities for the safety and well-being of our children. And whereas, together, we can make a difference in creating a positive culture. Therefore, be it resolved, I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of Liberty County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the first Friday of October every year as Save Our Next Generation Day, anti-bullying awareness in Liberty County, Georgia. I encourage our local communities, school officials, businesses, politicians, first responders, and law enforcement to support this cause by wearing orange to demonstrate that we stand together and are united for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion.
All righty. Mr. Brown, are you gonna come and give us this updated, what you have going on? The support group? I guess we should have had a little pink on it and a little orange on it.
Hello. Okay, my name is Lisa Brown, founder of Save Our Next Generation. Five years ago, I was touched to form this anti-bullying rally, unbeknownst to me that I would be at this point where I am now. But I have a heart and a love for kids, and especially when they're being taken advantage of. So Lord, put it in my spirit to have this rally and to be an advocate for all children in this area and surrounding areas in reference to being bullied. When it came to Save Our Next Generation Day, I wanted to show our kids that this community cared about them, not just saying we care, but showing action, putting action behind our words. So what was it that I can do to show them that? That's why I came up with Save Our Next Generation Day, because that day is for these little ones, and their friends, and their families, their mother, father, who is feeling completely lost in reference to bullying. Bullying is a huge problem in our neighborhood and throughout this nation. So if I can do anything to save one life, that's what I plan on doing, and I dedicate myself to doing that. Thank you.
Good mission. Come on around. You may have more than one, but you know what I'm talking about.
Only have one.
You only have one? He's great. Yeah. Ms. Moses trying to get somebody to... Who's gonna receive? All right. He said he's the one. Got it? All right, there you go. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. You're doing well?
Always. Thank you.
All right, we do.
The route for the...
being live streamed, so you can get a whole lot of people going on.
Okay. Okay. Just want to give a little information in reference to the anti-bullying rally walk that we're having on Saturday. That's going to take place Saturday, October 8th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The location is at 740 General Stewart Way. That's over in the business center, right beside the Country Inn and Suites. A lot of people probably don't know where that is, but that's where it's located. So what we're gonna do is start out from there. We're gonna assemble at 9:30, and then we're gonna leave from there and head up to General, I'm sorry, Highway 84, continuing down to General Scraven, making a right on General Scraven, and heading on down to General Scraven and E.G. Mouse Parkway. And basically, we're gonna do a little walking, waving, walking, waving. Once we get to that point, we're gonna turn back around, head back up the same direction that we came from, and head back to the business center on General Stewart Way. And please, please, wear orange. Wear orange, that's our color. So we're appreciative you guys can come out and help us celebrate this occasion. And also, on Friday, which is Save Our Next Generation, the 7th, we're asking everyone to wear orange as well, as representation of anti-bullying.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Friday, Saturday, wear your orange.
Right.
Wish you the best in your events. Thank you. Now, you all can stay, or you certainly can be excused if you like. It's at your discretion. All right. Departmental reports, LCPC. Mr. Rickenson.
Evening, Chairman Lovett. Members of the commission.
Full serve.
As far as a Gator fan, I got plenty of orange. At your September meeting, you all asked the LCPC to initiate an amendment to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan in response to the continued development pressures around Exit 76, particularly on the east side of I-95. So the first step in doing that is having a public hearing, which we're doing tonight. We've averaged that, a public hearing. I know we have some folks in the audience that wish to address you as part of that public hearing. But what I'd like to do in advance is just kind of go through and describe the process we're gonna go through. It won't take but just a second, but just kind of want to give an outline of what we're doing.
Need a motion to go into public hearing?
A move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, show of hands, please. All right.
This is our comprehensive plan, just the front page of it. I got a copy of it here, and just to prove that we got a real physical specimen of it, it's 200 pages long. It's on our website at dlcpc.org. So that's what we're looking at, opening up and taking some public input on and amending through this process. This is a joint comprehensive plan that's, it covers Liberty County, all of the municipalities within it. It was last adopted, all right, yeah, the plan was adopted in 2016, has had some amendments at that time. So this is another amendment to that 2016 comprehensive plan. What it is, it's a joint plan between all eight jurisdictions in Liberty County. A comprehensive plan is required by the state of Georgia and has been since 1989. The purpose is to assess progress in the county and to provide local officials, such as you, with information to make informed decisions about development in Liberty County and those jurisdictions. It covers housing, transportation, economic development, and other cultural resources. And each jurisdiction works with a distinct vision for itself. So Liberty County is responsible for the unincorporated county, and City of Heinzville is responsible for what's in the corporate limits of Heinzville. Likewise, Allenhurst, Flemington, and all the other smaller cities are responsible for their area. But it is a joint plan in the sense that you all came together to work on this. And it's updated on a ten-year cycle, so we're due to begin working on updating the comprehensive plan as our normal update beginning next year. But given the urgency that's been caused by the additional development pressure at Exit 76, you all asked us to update it, to go in and look at this particular area of the county in advance of that. So this is your comprehensive plan map. It's the future land use plan that goes with the, it's just part of this plan. We break up the Liberty County into many different sections, and we're gonna focus just on the one section here that's beyond, this is 95 here, so we're just gonna focus on this area here, which is kind of a peninsula that extends from Exit 76 all the way out to the end of Chronicles Island. That's the area that we're gonna be focused on. And let's just blow up at that particular area for just showing, you know, this is I-95, this is the tradeport east. I got all kinds of weird sounds. I guess I'm...
You're okay.
The, this is your tradeport east industrial park. This has been part of the county's industrial development strategy for the last 20 years. You've got Development Authority owns thousands of acres of land here, some of which has been developed, some has not been developed, and they own thousands of acres on the other side of I-95 as well. But we haven't been seeing as much pressure over there. This is where the action has been, so this is where you ask us to prepare an amendment to the comprehensive plan. And timeline, this takes some time. At your September meeting, you put a, you kind of deferred all zoning actions outside of a, out of a specific area until after the completion of this six-month process. So these are the milestones. We're looking again with tonight, this is our public hearing, is required, anytime you amend your comprehensive plan, is required by the state of Georgia. So we're checking that box off tonight. We're gonna take public comment on this and then begin our process. There's two community input meetings that we're gonna have in the community to get some additional, more informal, public input from the citizens. One will be on Thursday, October the 27th, at the Dorchester Village Civic Center. We'll do some advertising, we've got some contacts in the community, try to get it, get the word out as much as we can about that. And then we'll have a, we'll get the input that we receive at that meeting, and we'll bring it back on November the 21st, which is a Monday, a Monday before Thanksgiving, but that's when we're able to get the facilities. We'll have a follow-up meeting just to make sure that we heard the people write about that. And then after that, we'll be bringing it to the Planning Commission on December the 20th for a public hearing, and they'll be considering making a recommendation, and they'll bring it back to you in this forum on January the 3rd. That's when we'll be bringing it back to you for your consideration. That's not the end of it. When we have the public hearing here on January the 3rd, it'll have to be submitted to the CRC for a regional review, and then that process normally takes about 60 days. So March the 7th is when we're looking at bringing it back for your final act. So there will be, there will be two community planning meetings and two formal public hearings, one at the Planning Commission and one here. Plenty of opportunity for public input on this comprehensive plan amendment between now and March the 7th, and we hope to bring it back to you for action. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about this. And as I said, we've advertised it as a public hearing, so there are some folks here that would like to speak.
Jill, can any of these dates be changed?
They can. I mean, this is what we've scheduled at this point, but if there's something that you'd like to ask to change, we can certainly see if we can do that.
Change that November 21st date to another date.
Okay, we can, I'll probably push that back. It just depends on the Dorchester Civic Center's...
It's supposed to be Thanksgiving, yeah. When it, when it comes back to the Planning Commission on the 20th, that's, that will be a listening session for the Planning Commission as to what suggestions have been made? Is that what, is that the purpose, primary purpose of that meeting, or?
It'll be a listening session, but we will present what, what the recommendation is, and we'll also have a public hearing.
Opportunity.
They'll take public input on it.
Okay.
They meet in this room, so same forum where you meet.
Okay. All right. Before I open any questions from the commissioners, before I go to the public. We may reserve the right to come back. It's like to say in the courtroom. All right. Who's here that I'd like to, now, it's very early in the process, but if someone wants to make, I see two hands up. Some statements, please, please come and state your name, if you will, for the record, please, and share your...
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Mark Bush. I live on the east side. I am one of constituents for Mr. Stevens. Thank you for all that you're trying to do for us. It's greatly appreciated, believe me. Okay, I'm going first to go off and talk about the proposed plan for the million-square-foot facility at 2426 Islands Highway, plat number 305001. All that property, I have hunted it, okay, with my boat. It is swamp, okay? It backs up to a small community, yes, and it's virtually useless, except for timber harvesting and wildlife, okay? You're talking, right now, just look, if you just go down the street just a few miles, you'll see Booker, that huge furniture store that we were promised we would never be able to see, but, okay, that's neither here nor there, it's dead deal. They raised that property nine feet. They only have one retention pond. Retention pond doesn't do a dag-on thing, all right? Because our water table's, what, 18, 20 inches down now out there? So when you dig down that deep, water steeps up. Therefore, a retention pond is useless, okay? It has diverted a lot of water traffic into our houses and into our properties. My property alone, where I raise bees, is flooded most of the days, so I have to walk around in boots, okay? Again, I don't care. I chose to live out in the boonies, okay? First note, 2426 is a swamp. You're going to have to put in tons and tons and tons of dirt. You're gonna have to, you've already made a grant and put it on the people of Liberty County as a whole, the whole county, for $3 million in increase of our taxes to fix Exit 76's bridge and the roadways out there, okay? Agreed, the bridge needs to be fixed. You can sit on that bridge at 4:00 in the afternoon, like I do most days, going home, and you can feel the semis shaking it. It needs to be repaired. I do agree 100%, and I have no problem with that. The roads out that way are another problem. There's no issues with them, other than the fact that we can't get them painted, or we can't get the little reflectors. Got it, cool. But it's a country road. That's what, that is the appeal that everybody has. That is the... That is the appeal that the Georgia movie companies that come around here and do all our little movies and stuff for Hollywood. That's the appeal. That's the first thing I want to bring up to you. Secondly, Mr. Marion can tell you, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Stevens, apologies. I didn't mean to use your first name, sir. Mr. Stevens can tell you, there's, your own commissioner here has stated that they're, I'm sorry, the. The LPC, apologies, okay? Has stated that there's property for them on the west side of 95 that's not being utilized. That is true. Right behind the place that shall not be named, now called Fleming Market, there is a very large area that is open. And it's compacted dirt, and it's open, and it can be used immediately for construction. Sure, you might have a little bit of problem with traffic coming in and out of there. Why don't we take that $3 million and increase that intersection area? That's one thing. Second note, this commission put together several years ago off of 17, a huge area where they initially wanted to try and push Target to, which is just down the street from the little seafood shack, Captain D., Captain Joe's, okay? That whole area is wide open. That'd be perfect. And if someone wants to come back to you all and say it's not in the I-95 corridor, I challenge you to go look at Georgia DOT and federal DOT. I-17 is part of the I-95 corridor. It is considered an access and is considered a secondary to I-95. We don't need all that smog, all that garbage from the semis. We don't need 1,740 additional semis on Islands Highway. We have children that come off of the buses every day, twice a day, go to go and to come. And then also later in the afternoon for some after-school activities. Those semis will become a detriment to our, our children and to our wildlife out there. You all want to have wonderful, beautiful Liberty County. It's great, it's beautiful. East side is that beauty. That is where everything is at. Our boat ramps, our walking trails, minus the one right there by the, by Midway's council area, City Hall. Everything is out there, and that's what is drawing everybody out there. That's why Sunbury was built. That's why Yellow Bluff was developed, to bring people in there. Go to Tradeport East now, look at the cars. Chatham, Macintosh, that's the primaries, not Liberty County like it was planned for. Reason why is we can't even get their management to live in our area. Why? Because Snob Hill and Richmond Hill and Chatham. Because there's nothing down there. Because nobody wants to continue improving. We have up there, talk about housing, okay? Why not, sir, could you please wake up when someone's talking? Thank you. Okay?
Just, just address us now, don't get, keep it right here.
I'm trying to address the august body, sir.
Keep it right here.
Okay, I'm trying to address the august body. But when someone's falling asleep, okay? And it's on tape. So, the point I'm trying to get at is, okay? You talk about housing. East side would be a great place for housing. Infrastructure's not there, so we have to do wells and septic. That's perfectly fine. I prefer that. But 10,000 pounds or gallons or whatever it was for a one facility every two days? No, okay? They're not going to be able to do it. They're going to drill a deep well out there. Even if you bring water, how are you going to run it over on 95? You're not. You're going to put it into the new bridge to be carried over by the bridge, okay? In the bridge's foundations, all right? There's that. But they're not going to do a septic. That's all they're going to do is septic. They're not going to do a wastewater treatment. And if you build a wastewater treatment like was originally planned down off of Dorchester, oh, wait a minute, that's been destroyed already anyway because we're going to put a truck stop in there or at least a new parkers with a scale, and we're going to remove Dorchester Road. Folks, please, let's quit worrying about greedy development and start listening to the people that live in the area and do responsible development, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Next person, please. And please keep your comments kind of concise, if you will, please.
Underdurney. You've heard from me before.
I have.
Back again.
I see.
I am extremely concerned regarding the carcinogens, and this is from February 11th, '22. This is not outdated research. The health impacts of diesel pollution, the World Health Organization says the diesel exhaust is carcinogenic to humans. Ample research demonstrates that its components, which are the PM2 and the, you know, the nitrogen oxide precursors are harmful for human health, even at very low concentrations and very short-term, you know, breathing of these. I'm just going to do some little things here. The other thing it says, it inflicts a number of respiratory health issues over both short and long-term exposure, including reduced lung function and inflammation. And the ground-level ozone, which is going to definitely be a problem out there, it says it's particularly harmful for more vulnerable populations, including elderly like me and those with pre-existing conditions. It says even with very small, short-term creases in, in ozone ground level has shown to damage crops, leading to measurable reductions in outputs. This is everything, I mean, there are so many sites that agree with this. There are actually 18 of them, including the environment, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, NCBI, NIM. I mean, all cited, all verified. And I'm, I'm not going to read all of this here, but all of you voted for the Liberty County ordinances relating to land clearing and tree protection. What you have proposed out on our site, you violate every single one of them. Every single one. Everything from, you say, you know, here, the, the purpose, okay, of these ordinances that you passed says to lessen air pollution and carbon dioxide, ha, ha, ha. Promote air quality. Reduce noise, heat, and glare. Prevent soil erosion, which is already becoming a problem out there. Minimize increases in temperature on lands with natural planted and/or, you know, planted tree cover. Reduce noise, heat, and glare again so that these and other distractions of movement in one area do not adversely affect another area. Emphasis and importance of trees and vegetation, both physical and visual, including buffers. You know, we should be enhancing the aesthetic qualities to the community to ensure, you know, tree removal doesn't bother that. Minimize the costs of constructions, construction regarding drainage and so forth. You're supposed to maintain, when it's possible, 50% canopy, tree canopy. I don't know, I'm just going to tell you, this is a death sentence, literally, for what is being proposed. And from the initial meetings I went to with the committee over here, I mean, you know, the original area was about this big, and from a few weeks ago, it was about that big. And when I got that map, I almost had a heart attack because now it's this big. It just keeps expanding. And I agree with Mr. Bush. It is nothing more than greed. There are other places you can do this. So, all this concentration is not in our area. It is extremely irresponsible to be doing this. Because I'm telling you, people are going to die. They're going to die from the pollution that's here and obviously from traffic accidents. Other things that are not being considered is the fact our property values are going to go straight down. And, you know, our automobile insurance is going to go straight up because of all the accidents that are inevitable with all of this. And I believe Mr. Bush mentioned, talking about the children. Our children stand right on Islands Highway because there are a lot of, you know, little roads that aren't paved that go back there. And so, the buses, you know, the kids have to stand right on the highway to be picked up. People are not being responsible, not at all. I mean, you have not read the research on the dangers to the emissions out there, let alone the noise, the congestion. You need to take a good look at this and not just put your rubber stamp on it and say, oh, this is going to bring in lots of money to us. It might bring in the money. I just wonder, you know, what human lives are worth to all of you. And I'll tell you, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know if you're going to listen or not, but I said this is outright shameful.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a question. I'll be brief. I'm sure you all got your email from Ms. Hamilton, Marcy Hamilton.
I saw it.
You could not be here today, she's still in.
Well, we're not addressing that email today now.
Oh, that was long. No, sir, but I was just wondering. I'm sure you all did get it.
We did, we got it, yeah, and she'll be.
Oh, Janice Kay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
My quick question is regarding this. This is, I know, I'm trying to stay on topic here with this. If we've already changed, we've changed so much of the area already. We already went against the comprehensive plan. What is the ultimate goal of this, since a lot of the areas have already been changed, that we have concerns with? I mean, we've already done so much approving of rezoning, et cetera, et cetera, that went against the comprehensive plan. I think actually you asked that question, which brought it to the forefront. Thank you, Ms. Constance Fraser. And that's our question. So, this is almost like a futile exercise in who's what, and what are we doing? I mean, if we're already changed most of the area that's in question, you can't change my house. You can't change a lot of everybody else's house. So, the big swath that's actually under consideration has already been changed. So, we got all these meetings, all these dates, and really alls it is is to satisfy some government actual requirement that says we have to have a comprehensive plan?
It's to satisfy, it's to satisfy citizens' input.
No, we're already, we're already not satisfied, though. You already.
Because as Jeff said, we're a little ahead of the curve with redoing the plan. We don't have to do it now, but we're doing it now because of the citizens' input.
But we already allowed so much to be changed. So, again, in my citizens' opinion.
And here, this is very, I understand you.
We already put too much. Ms. Kay.
Kay.
Yeah, you can always freak that, Kay.
It's Kay, it's Kay, yeah.
So, again, that's my question. What is the purpose of this?
Ms. Kay, you need to know, and others need to know too, that, you know, you have the comprehensive plan, but as Liberty County grows, if you exclude everything on the east end of the county, the comprehensive plan will be changed on the west end of the county as changes happen. You have to have a base, you have to have a baseline.
I respect that, and I've lived here for three years now. I've been active, and I've been trying to be very active since January. I've been at the meetings, I've been online even watching you all. To be honest with you, I haven't seen anything go against the comprehensive plan yet on the west side. So, again, if you want to catalog that and give us a list, that would be great. Again, I just, that was my question, that, you know. I don't know what we're going, how much.
Well, that's because the emphasis right now is on the east side, but I promise you, there's interesting conversation about changes on the west side. What do you call the Riceboro side, whatever side that is too?
That's east side. That's still kind of like quasi-east. That's still the east side.
Far east, far east, far east.
Because I know you guys have a lot to do.
Yeah, but even the.
I-17 actually was I-95, originally, the 95 corridor. So, yes, that is still east of, that's Riceboro, east.
You have to have a plan, but your plan is not written in stone. You have to move with the growth that's coming to the county.
Okay, but we already changed.
And my, and my comment to you.
So, I appreciate.
Thank you. Just know though, that, hear me very well, the west side is being considered.
But the whole thing is, we can't change. It's already been done, so, again.
So, it's not just the east side, is my point.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, the other one, other question too, is the blue area. I understand we can't develop that, but yet we can't develop, like, if somebody restaurant wants to come and compete against Sunbury, it can't right now. But yet, we're still getting DRIs for the blue area. So, I mean, I hope that we just, really all just, like Mark said, slow down, that's all.
We got the message. Thank you.
My name is Wendy, and I live out on the east side as well.
You need your last name too, please, ma'am.
And I guess the biggest concern I am is, I moved out in the country because I wanted to be away from the city and have my kids enjoy nature. And one of the biggest concerns I have with a lot of that is, I, I know there's going to be development and stuff, but there is no infrastructure for that kind of development out there. There's no water, there's no sewage, and that's what my biggest concern because all of us out there have to be on a well. And more and more people or businesses that are out there, they're taking our water supply. And what's going to happen is it's going to deplete that water supply, and then what's going to happen to the citizens out there? I mean, you guys can't just put water out there instantly if we run out of water. And that's one of my biggest concerns, and like they, they said with the bridge, I'm already having problems getting home. Everybody's getting on that bridge to turn left, and I'm just sitting there waiting and waiting and waiting because I can't get over the bridge because it's only a two-lane bridge. I mean, certain things like that, I think, need to be developed before more stuff gets built so that we can plan for that kind of stuff. But I, I would prefer that not a lot of that infrastructure gets past Dorchester because most of that pass there is mostly all residential. And that one area that they were showing on the end, that's literally not even a mile from my house, that new proposed area. And that's scary because that's thousands and thousands of acres, and I'm already getting flooding right now. I've got more snakes in my yard. I have more deer because of all the, the trees and so forth that have been cut down, and I'm just worried about that. My main concern is the flooding and how that's going to help us. Because I don't know how you're going to be able to pump some of that out so that we don't get flooded. Because I know on my property, we have wetlands. I was told when I bought my property, I was not allowed to fill it in. But then I see businesses that come in and they can pay to fill that in legally, but I'm not supposed to fill that in. And it just seems like it's an unfair deal.
Thank you, ma'am. Duly noted.
What's your address, Chairman? What was your address?
181 Genon Drive.
And Jeff, my only suggestion is when you have your town halls, have your subject matter experts, folk there to. Some of these things I could address, but it's not my, that's not my, you know, I can do it informally, but somebody could do much better than me, that's the engineers and people like that. So, we'll let them do that when that time, time comes. But I will say this, Ms. Bush, that the, there is some infrastructure there, not as much as we need, but there is some there. So, it's not without infrastructure, just need to be enhanced, and that's a plan in progress also. All right? One more?
My name's Steve Rushing.
Questions tied into this, Mr. Rushing?
It is.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I understand the, the need to hurry this amendment up, move it up a year. You said it was from pressure being applied for the development. Could you tell us who's applying that pressure?
Quite a few, quite a few proposed developments.
So.
You want me to try, there is no requirement that we do it for developers. It's, it's being undertaken by the commission because of the growth and the change in use that's happening.
It was moved up a year faster than it was supposed to because of pressure being applied. It was going to the county to do it. I was just wondering who's applying the pressure.
I'll, I'll let, that's, I think that was not really the context. I'll let Jeff kind of address this.
Yeah, I didn't mean anybody was twisting their arm or anything.
Not in that sense. Did you think in that sense, sir? You thought like arm twisting, is that what you were thinking?
Pressure was being applied to move this up a year early.
No, because of the development pressure, because there's applications, people come in here every month asking to rezone tracts of land. So, and, and the more, the more they come in, the more we hear from people in the community that we don't want this, we don't want this. And so, the attempt here is to try to sort things out and figure out, you know, how, just how far you can go to accommodate development before you need to draw a line. I think that's what we're, what we're trying to do here.
The million-square-foot warehouse is proposed, does it also fall into the tax-free or tax-exempt? Or will it be, will this warehouse, will it probably tax?
I don't know because that's really a private developer that's doing that. It's not going to be owned by the Development Authority. I'm not going to speak for the Development Authority, Mr. Chairman, but generally, generally those.
Has to meet a certain criteria.
Yes, are owned by the Development Authority to meet certain tax-free. Now, the tax-free, it doesn't, it doesn't apply necessarily to property taxes, it applies to inventory tax that's put on, that the voters voted in, that inventory tax exemption. So, when you talk about tax exemption or tax deferral, it's really for the, for the goods in process that are stored at the facility. That's what it is.
If that would have to go through. Obviously, that back exit from the road, like the other ones, why? I just want to make sure that the, the taxpayers aren't the ones having to pay for them to have their return lane and so forth. But that's not fair to us. I mean, if they want to put it there and it's gonna go through, I mean, a taxpayer shouldn't have to support the bill, if they want access to Island's Highway.
Duly noted, duly noted. Mr. Richardson, oops, last one.
I want to add one last thing, because you're talking about widening Island's Highway. I'm right on Island's Highway. I'm afraid my house is gonna be basically on Island's Highway. I mean, how much footage are you gonna leave? And I, I mean, what, how many lanes are you talking about out there?
Well, that's, that's a bit premature.
Well, it's not for me, when I'm looking at how close I already am to Island's Highway and.
And you said you live a mile down beyond the, uh.
Right, yeah. Very. Well, and we're that one that.
Are you, are you a mile down beyond the Dorchester School?
Dorchester School, what's that?
No, no.
We're down, we're down by Gemini, and we're Sunbury Country Store.
Oh, Sunbury Country Store? Oh, no, oh, we're not near, we're not going down that area. Yeah, the Country Store?
Yes.
Yeah, you, we're not, oh, my gosh, no, no. We're not going down that way.
The, the proposed widening project narrows back in just beyond the old Dorchester School?
Yeah.
At Brig, at Brigden Road. It ends there.
But 2426, that, that big thing you're talking about.
That would access, and, and again, yeah, I think the thing, too, is, and I started to say this earlier, on the, on the specific projects, those are in what's called a DRI mode right now for review by CRC and by LCPC. They'll have individual hearings on each of those that you'll be able to comment on. So, so you'll be able to get answers to all those individual questions. What are you gonna do with the water? Where are you gonna get your wastewater? All those will have their separate hearings. My understanding on that is, that is not going to access Island's Highway. They're going to access an internal road in, in the industrial park to come out.
That's not what they said. They said they.
I, I, I'm just telling you what, what I've heard, but, but it would be best to come. Yes, ma'am, it'd be best to come to those individual hearings, because those will address those individual projects on, on amount of fill, drainage, and everything, so it'll be.
Well, let's look at, so you can continue talking about what's going on in Drakeport, because that's, the construction in there is.
Yeah.
A very big problem for all of us, and it's said by the watershed, or several times, that our watershed is ruining.
So, so, so again, without getting into the individual projects, that road, that road widening that has been looked at in the concept would end at Brigden Road. It wouldn't go past.
Nowhere near the Sunbury Store, yeah. All right, Mr. Richardson, let's bring this to a close.
Yeah.
Ready, sir?
Any more questions for me? That, that concludes my presentation, if you have questions.
All right, now, now, I just, my, um, recommendations to you, have the SMEs there. I know there's some in this room, I'm not gonna put them on the spot today for this time, but we're gonna have the hearing. And then, if you all, you know, write your questions down, and you also go to the meeting, so you have your questions ready for, for the two hearings that are gonna be done. Now, the November 21st one, these, they will probably be adjusted, so.
I'm gonna try to move them back into September.
Okay.
I mean, not September, December.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so y'all probably need to go to the LCPC's website to see the revised date for November 21st, 20th, yes, all right? Thank you. Chair, take the motion, come out of public here and go back into regular session.
Move.
Second, all in favor, show of hands. All right, back into regular session. Thank you all. Yes, ma'am. Engineering, Mr. Long.
Sent out an email to everybody over the weekend, and we've talked about this a little bit before, the LMeg money that's available for Liberty County to draw. We need to make some decisions on what we're gonna use that for. I threw a, a list of projects together that I knew about that were of interest to the commissioners. They can either be on the list or off the list. And I don't have one for Commissioner Walden, but I would like you to kind of look at the list and let me know, and if we need to adjust things, I'd like to make a decision during the mid-month meeting later this month, so that I can put the package together and go ahead and get it to DOT. And we have until the end of December to get this done, but like, the sooner we get it, the sooner we get the money going, and then we, it works better for everybody.
You sent us the email?
Yes.
So, basically, we're getting $386,493.18. If you break that down evenly with six commission districts, that'd be $64,415 apiece. One of the ones we're looking at for you is possibly Bill Carter Road, or if you want to do something different, you can look at that. We have sidewalks for Elm, Demery, and Windhaven for Commissioner Frazier, Mary Todd Road for Commissioner Flare, Limmick Road for Commissioner Jones, Track Lane for Commissioner Gillard, and I don't have one for Commissioner Walden, but we updated a few prices on that, and I'll send out some more for you.
Mr. Mayor, just.
Now, the list also kind of gives you what's eligible and what's not eligible.
Just had a question there, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Long, the, um, the LMeg amount, obviously, that will be coming from the state, but the match will be coming out of our SPOLOs dollars? Okay, and then the.
SPOLOs or T-SPOLOs or?
Or T-SPOLOs, that's correct.
Right. It, it doesn't matter if it's SPOLOs or T-SPOLOs.
Mine would be T-SPOLOs.
Clarification.
But anyway, I just want to, and this is the estimated cost, like, I, I'm satisfied with Mary Todd Road with that staying there.
Yes, ma'am.
At this point.
Yes, ma'am. So, the, and the main thing is, what the department's gonna look at is, did Liberty County receive the $386,000, and did they spend their $115,000 portion that they have to do? And, you know, Long, this is an eligible project, and they want you to use the money.
Commissioners, he presented the list, do you all want more time to digest this?
Yes, I was.
Commissioner Smith just said that she's okay with Mary Todd Road, that you all want the time to digest the recommended roads, and then.
Mr. Chairman.
Get back with them later, or?
I talked with Commissioner Walden, I, I thought he would've been here, but, um, he and I gonna, um, because he said, when, when he saw this spreadsheet here, that there wasn't nothing listed for him. He and I were gonna talk, and we'll get with Mr. Long, and we'll, um.
Yeah, I said it.
I, I do have, I do have one question, Trent. Again, and Track Lane is a, a road that was in my district before they redrew the lines, and that was, you know, something that I had planned when I had that, that area of the county. Now, and, and not to say that I still don't, don't have that plan, but if, if we, if I come up with something different from that, let's say, six months from now, I'll still be good?
Still be good.
Okay.
I can always change it.
Okay.
And I apologize, I didn't even think about that change.
No, I, I mean, I, I still, I still wanna do that. I'm always, I'm known for paving roads for Commissioner Stevens anyhow, so.
I knew that was coming up. Yeah, he's a winner in there.
Well, he, he, he appreciated, he appreciated it more than y'all will ever know, but, um, yeah, but I, I'll, um, we'll, we'll get with you, um, because.
Yes, sir, and I was not expecting.
Right.
Tonight.
Okay.
But, you know, I, I really do need, you know, we've mentioned it a couple times, we've never really taken any action, and I felt like tonight, say, okay, hey, we gotta make decisions today.
You want to bring it back to mid-month, you say?
Sure. I'm gonna do it during my.
Mr. Frazier, you good with yours?
I'm, I'm, I'm good with the project, I'm just, absolutely. Yeah, we're, we're gonna have to find some value engineering in, in these sidewalks.
Yeah, I've already talked about that.
Man, it seem like sidewalks cost more than, than a road now.
Touch bases with Commissioner Jones, but he is, I look here. All right, mid-month then, we'll.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, y'all.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
May not be the right time, but I do need to ask a question.
What you got?
Paid a visit down today in Sunbury, and there's no action on Pilot, Pilot Lane.
Pilot Lane, yes, sir. So, the stakes, we didn't stake it because of the hurricane, so we're restaking it this week, so you can, so, um, there's no action. I put stakes out too early, they sprout legs and walk, so we tried to do it just ahead of him. By Friday evening, you should see some stakes.
All right, I'll be honest, say it tomorrow.
Same as Tree Hill?
Tree Hill.
Okay, all right.
And one other thing, so this is the price to do Bill Carter Road now?
Yes, sir. Um, what I did is, I kind of took the estimate we had from APAC, did it, what, January of this past year?
Didn't seem like it was that.
Eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I've applied some, I looked at all the quantities, and I applied the newer unit prices to it, and that's where I came up with this number. Yeah, things are not getting cheaper.
Now, that's, that's into the millions. I mean, if they did it done now, what is that road about a mile long?
You had to ask me.
Close to it.
It's right at a mile.
Right at a mile.
Last January, I could've told you how many feet it was, but I.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Y'all have a wonderful evening.
About sending that.
Liberty lease agreement for Liberty County reentry? Time to redo that?
Yes, sir, it is. They've been with us, got a copy, the proposed lease agreement is exactly like the original lease agreement, just with a extended termination date on it, so, um, just recommend approval.
You're familiar with that lease?
Yeah, I just have one question, Joe. Is, is the, the reentry program the only entity in that building?
It is, yes, sir.
They were letting coastal workforce have a few.
They might be occupying a table in there, but I think.
When they.
Was it, are they back in that building? I don't know.
I don't.
I don't think they are yet.
Not yet?
Yes, sir. But, but as far as taking up space, again, I think they're just working at a table right there right now.
Yes, that's all.
In the conference room.
All right, Chair, take the motion.
A motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second, you got that? You got a choice. All in favor, show of hands. All right, thanks, sir. Amendment to ACCG retirement plan?
Yes, sir, we got this from ACCG, and basically, they're asking us to vote to amend Schedule D-2 of the Administrative Services Agreement. Under our plan, and there are a few like our plan, there are only three tier options that are allowable right now. There's other counties in the state that are like this, too. They're recommending all counties add tier three, which will give four tiers for participants to choose, basically, investment groups in. So, they're asking us to, again, amend Schedule 2D, which adds tier three. And that's the single asset class option. So, if you're familiar with the stocks and everything, that, that'll, again, give the participants another class option to consider investment.
Definite investment, okay.
That's not the defined, it's just the.
No, ma'am, it's not defined.
This is the newer.
That's correct, yes.
Uh, benefits that.
Where they choose their options.
Yes, sir.
Have an addition option here.
Yes.
All right, are you comfortable making a, a motion, Commissioners?
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the ACCG retirement plan.
Second.
Second, we approve the amendment to the ACCG retirement plan with a new tier. Any further discussion? All in favor, let them show of hands, please. All right, motion passes. Thank you, sir. Green space services?
Yes, sir, this is, just to renew the agreement with, um, basically, Georgia Alabama Land Trust, as you remember, some of you remember years back, we acquired protected green space that has to be, uh, basically monitored each year. Photographs taken, a report written and submitted. Again, no change in that, it's $10,000 a year. They do two reviews of the land as required and, and submit the documents, the reports and the pictures of that. And in this past review, there were no violations noted.
Mr. Chair, uh, they don't come in front of us anymore?
They don't, they just.
It's been, I know it's been a while.
Really on a digital stick.
Right, because what was the attorney? The lady.
Lady.
The lady. She's probably retired by now.
You said she might be what?
I said she might be retired.
Oh, yeah.
She may be.
Yeah, I know it's been a while.
Catherine.
Right.
Catherine Edmonds.
All right, Chair, take the motion.
A move.
A move. Second?
Second.
All in favor, show of hands. My only question is, has it, not about this, has there been any added properties to?
There have not been any added properties, yes, sir. And we, and we have had violations in the past, they have noted violations in the past, and they also help us send out corrective letters.
X-76, not a.
Kind of like Commissioner Stevens, I may be talking on a term, but I know there's some conversations, but it's not green spaces, but conservation.
Oh, uh-huh.
There's some people who have property in conservations who are rethinking.
Coming out of conservation.
Tell my friends. All right, agreement for managed medical services?
Also time to renew that agreement, Ms. Chairman, with Liberty Regional Medical Center. And before I go there, I just want to kind of give you a quick update on the improvements that you've been able to make over the last year, that you assumed EMS, and Ms. Sinsler's here, not trying to put her on the spot, but just, you might have some questions for her. We did do some station improvements over there, also have, have done some equipment upgrades through ARPA that, that y'all allowed to happen. Generator, we purchased a generator that'll come in over there, it's not a generator stationed currently. We're gonna be doing some roof repairs, because the roof has some, some issues with it. You are able to procure during the year, three EMS units, which are good, at about $90,000 apiece. And as you recall, as you started in, one of the things to, to get staffing back up was the paying compensation, so this is a recollection on that, about $100,000 put towards that. All those things together, over the last year, your investment in EMS, as far as, been about $992,000, not including the new station.
Thank you.
Not including the new station, of course, is being built on the east side. Staffing-wise, basically, we've only got three vacancies at this point over your approved staffing levels that are good. A year ago, that staffing was only at about 50%, and fluctuated, so you've come a long A year ago, that staffing was only at about fifty percent, and fluctuated, so you've come a long way there in what you've done. This past year, we've had about eighty-nine hundred, little over eighty-nine hundred run reports that were done, total runs, and those include transfers, various things. Our schedule as we're running this year is slightly up, but you won't be much off of that mark. It's probably gonna be around nine thousand total runs. We'll hit the holiday period and things will pick up even more. We continue to handle some transfers for Liberty Regional Medical Center, we're averaging about forty-five of those a month, slightly down, but still, still up somewhat. It's down from where it was, but something we're still trying to work on. We are trying to, we're gonna propose a change to the SOG, which is the, the operational guideline that, that we go by. Previously, the SOG that was in place basically said that, that all units could leave the county if necessary, even on emergency transfers, or even on transfers from, from Liberty Regional Medical Center. But that was leaving our county uncovered. And so we're proposing a change of that, to have two units in the county at all times. Generally running five units, especially on the weekends, during the days when we can staff them. But most of the time, there's four units in the county. So this will leave two for the county, and we're working with them even to try to reduce those transfers some more. There was a committee meeting held last week, as we get together and talk about EMS operations with the hospital, and I think we're all trying to work diligently to, to do what we can to work with them to decrease those further. So, working very well there. And then on the agreement itself, the hospital has suggested one change to the agreement, and it's on page four, that I think you've got copies of. As you know, they technically still hold the license for EMS. The decision was made to really try to hopefully get some language introduced that simplified the, the license transfer process in the state of Georgia, and we're working on that, in fact, working to having some legislation maybe introduced this session to try to do that. The other way to transfer that license would be, under the current scenario of the hospital in this case, just giving the state notice that it was going to decline to have the license. It then goes into a hearing period before the Region Nine Council, and the Region Nine Council then makes a recommendation to those applicants that apply to run the service, who should be selected. So, you know, we'll see what happens with the language, and feel pretty confident that that's gonna happen. But if not, then we can approach what to do as far as through that next procedure. That being said, with them holding the license, I think they had some concerns, as I talked with the hospital administrator, they had suggested some language in the final paragraph on page four, section two point oh three, to, according to her, really just ensure that nothing jeopardize the license. Right now, they're having to carry liability coverage, we're having to carry liability coverage, 'cause they're the license holder. They suggested some language, as you see there, after talking with her and really talking about the management and, and things there, she said basically there, or by email, that their basic concern was jeopardizing the license, which would make them liable. I'd maybe like to suggest, if that's the case, reading it breese so broad, that there'd be some language that says, "Any proposed modifications to EMS services contemplated by the county, not permitted under said license, shall be mutually agreed upon by both parties prior to modification." And I think that takes care of any concerns related to their license liability. Otherwise, it's pretty broad. The reason Mr. Davis put operational standards in there was to ensure that the county, if it was gonna run EMS, had the ability to make changes to schedules, make changes to the SOGs that we just talked about, about number of units that were gonna be available and some of those procedures. Those really don't have anything to do with the license. The license is for provision of emergency medical services, so as long as we do that, we'll be in compliance. But, but if that's what the hospital's concern is, I certainly would support anything that takes away their concern about forfeiture or liability on the license. So that, that would be my recommendation, that if you were going to amend the agreement, that it would be amended with some language that addresses the license specific to that. I do note that Mr. Davis did have in there, though, the final sentence of, I guess it is that first complete sentence in there, as we like the lawyer-y's with the sentences. It says currently, that we can make changes to organize, expand, improve, modify the services, so long as any modifications to the EMS services are permitted under the license. It seems to cure it already, with the language that was in there last year and this year. But if we wanted to add that additional language, I mean, that's just, that just strengthened. I mean, we basically couldn't change anything that would jeopardize the license, or jeopardize the hospital.
Excuse me, where was that sentence at you just read?
It's under Section two point oh three, operational standards.
Yep.
It's a pretty long sentence.
It's the first sentence?
You get through the first part, and it basically, there's a semicolon, 'cause it talks about, basically, being able to conduct the service as we see fit, and so it's.
God, I see it.
Yes, ma'am, it's a final piece to that. Basically says, "We couldn't do anything to modify the service that's not consistent with the Georgia license," which we don't intend to do.
Do you think that sentence would address their concerns?
I mean, to me, it's, it's pretty clear, we can't modify anything that's not consistent with the current license. But if, again, if we wanted to put another sentence in there that said, "Anything that we contemplate to, could," then we'll certainly have dialogue with them prior to doing it, and you would, too, I mean, it's a given.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Trump?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I'm glad that we let our attorney look at it, prior to bringing it to us, and that, and I agree that if we need to put that second piece in there, that he has suggested, I guess, that we would put that, or other than if we're just gonna leave it the way it is. But obviously, I don't believe, and I don't think this indicates that, that the hospital has actually day-to-day operations authority over the unit. Because obviously, we took, they wanted us to take it over, and we did. And so if we get the license in our name, that pretty much.
Null and void, yeah.
Null and void, complete the hospital authority, or the hospital is completely out of the picture.
Yes, ma'am, you won't even.
Then we'll go.
You won't even have to have an agreement.
Okay.
That's what.
And we're hoping to have that done through legislation soon. And, but I want to make sure we got it staffed up, we just ran through everything that we've been able, able to accomplish over just one year, especially with our employees getting that staffed up. Appreciate you, Crystal, and all that you're doing there. Well, it's cost us a lot of money, but it's been well worth it. It's well worth it, when you call, that they come, anyway. But anyway, I just wanna make sure we got the language right, and then, you know, if, if we need to maybe look at it next month, or if it, if it's something efficient that we have to approve tonight. But I just wanna make sure that we've, we've got the right language in there, Ms. Chairman.
He's got to start for action tonight.
Okay, well, that, that's fine with me.
We really need to.
Okay.
So, so, so we're gonna do this, then you said having the extra sentence doesn't hurt anything. Does it obligate us in any way that's not positive for the county? No?
I think it's just, it's really redundant with the sentence for it.
Okay.
But that's what.
But it more clearly, I guess, spells out that nothing can be done to jeopardize the license, and anything contemplated that could, would have to be mutually agreed upon by both parties. Obviously, we're not gonna do that, but.
And they asked for that?
Well, they actually asked for.
Or what was it written in?
The county's free to reorganize, improve, expand and modify the services, as it may deem appropriate, to add, and both parties mutually agree. Now, that, that, to me, it's pretty broad, and it says that really on anything that you intend to improve, expand or otherwise modify.
That's too broad.
So, you know, Ms. Chairman, and I don't know, Commissioner Stevens, if you had something you wanna add to it, but if we need to approve it with what, with that first sentence, since that's been brought to our attention, and the attorney believes that will hold, then. Just do it like that, or we can give you.
Leadway.
Leadway is, if, we'll prove it pending if the attorney wants to add that other sentence in there.
I'll get his opinion.
Why don't we give Mr. Brown that leadway?
Yes, sir, I agree. You need a motion already.
Chair, entertain a motion, that's fair, then.
Ms. Chairman, I would make that motion, that we approve the agreement for the managed medical services, pending his speaking with our attorney, to see if we need to add anything, add to or take away, but not to add what was written in on this contract.
Second to that?
That's given, Mr. Brown, that's given the administrator the.
He'll give it to Kelly.
Yes, it, yes, sir. And the, before we vote on the, does it go back to the hospital for their approval?
Yes, ma'am, it will.
So both parties have to agree, or, okay.
Good, all in favor? Show your hands, please.
You're welcome.
Crystal, Crystal, if you will, you already kinda touched on it, but, you know, at the meeting we had the other day, Commissioner was there, they were talking about the transfers, and sometimes there's a delay based on what our unit's doing at the time. And I asked a question, I said, "Well, it's, it's good then for the nurses, who at the best have the patients, to be able to explain whether the unit's held up because of X, Y, Z, so the patient families will understand what's going on." Not just, we aren't just responding. If you would just touch on that for me while you're there, 'cause while, while we're being live straight, so the general audience can hear how we, how we're trying to operate to the, and most efficiently as we can.
Correct, we're gonna try to utilize this many resources here in our county, as there is a national wide shortage in EMS, in the industry as a whole. We can't rely on our mutual aid partners to help us when we have no units available, so that kind of, that is a matter to rely on that. So we're gonna start keep making sure that we have two units in the county now. That doesn't mean if we respond to scene, and that patient may need to go directly from scene to Savannah for higher level of care, the best interest of that patient. However, but as far as managing those transfers, it's very, very important to me, be able to answer to all of you, as well as our citizens who rely on our services, that they have that ambulance available and not being tied up with hospital transfers as a priority.
Something that complicates the transfers, you know, that Savannah hospitals on diversion sometimes, which means they're not taking any new patients.
Right.
And they're also short-staffed.
It increases our wall time, even though the local hospitals, when I say local, we're talking Savannah, Brunswick.
Crystal, to the mic.
We're talking Brunswick, Statesboro, and Savannah are our main hospitals that we try to go to locally as far as hospital transfers. But we increase now to go to Jacksonville, Augusta, Macon, Wake Cross. So, last week, we had three pending Augusta transfers within one night overnight. We, we cannot manage that effectively to ensure that our citizens here that rely on us, we would be available for that. Because if we have no aid and no mutual aid that's available, our closest unit may be responding from a transfer in Savannah. You're looking at well over an hour transport time at that point.
Crystal. Ms. Chair. Just for thoughts, let's say you got a transfer going to Jacksonville. What is that, about really five hours?
Depending if we don't, on the wall time, and what wall time means.
Right.
That we, we get there and there may not be a bed available, even though that facility accepted that transfer, it doesn't necessarily mean the bed's available.
Right.
You're looking at, with no traffic delays, we're going at a good time of day, you're about an hour and a half one way.
Right.
So you're at a minimum with no wall time, but then you have your patient transfer, your interaction with the report passed down, you're looking at a four-hour turnaround time for Jacksonville.
Now, one other thing, 'cause I guess, you know, I do monitor, I've heard sometime when they come back, they have to go all the way to Midway to get fuel, let's say it's Station One. Is there a way of correcting that, of speeding that up, Mr. Brown, where they won't have to go all the way?
We have WEX fuel cards that are available on our units. Ideally, when they're coming back into the county off of I-95, it makes sense for them to stop there at the county shop, buy some fuel there on their way back, 'cause they're coming back that way anyway. But the WEX fuel cards are an option for them.
Okay.
Prior to, prior to last August, they were required to go to the county shop to get fuel, but we changed that and said, basically, you can go anywhere to get fuel, if you happen to be coming out of the shop and get it there, but if you're in Hinesville, you don't have to drive to Midway to get fuel. So, yeah, we've done some things.
It, it did happen lately. Yeah, okay.
I'll make sure everybody is aware that.
It did happen lately.
That's been remedied, we've had the fuel card since we transitioned.
Let's think, define wall time to the people who wouldn't understand what that terminology means.
Sitting on the cart.
Wall time is you're sitting there in the wall, on the wall with your patient on the stretcher. Again, the facility accepted the transfer, that doesn't necessarily mean there's a bed available or staffing at the hospital as well. There's been increased, we've, we've been on the wall, our service has been on the wall up to six, eight hours at one time.
I have one more question. But those transfers that, obviously, the hospital's calling you to transfer, are they, and you may, are they really emergencies? Like, I mean, if they're emergencies, then I'm sure you try to get those as soon as possible, versus someone who may have been at the hospital and, you know, as an inpatient or something, and then they decided to, to move them. But I'm sure, I'm sure between the nurse or the doctor that's calling you to pick those up, or calling the station to pick those up, that they determine if it's actually an emergency, or if it's just a transfer type?
They, they do classify that to us? Majority of our transfers come out of the ER, we do occasionally take those, some out of med surg. My understanding with med surg, sometimes they're there for a couple of days, and either they may not be getting better, or they're deteriorating, so that doesn't mean the reason we need to transfer. All these patients do most likely meet a level of needing that higher level of care that our local hospital here cannot manage or handle. Whether or not they're true emergent, I, I can't really answer that whole.
You're, you're depending on the doctor to, you know, give you that information, I'm sure.
So actually, Crystal, not putting you on the spot, but I think if you come out and say it's a stat trans, transport, they don't have a heart monitor, don't have O2, that's not, is that?
Sometimes, no, sometimes they don't have any, any of those.
All right, leave it off.
I will share, I mean, just ran some numbers today.
Just as a note, too, the only thing we're supposed to be transferring for the hospital are stat transfers.
I really wanted, want Crystal to educate, assess commissioners on what's going on in the field, so that we know in case we hear something in the community, we're able to explain that, that we're dealing with a shortage. Hospitals are backed up, the transfers that are being, I refer it out now to faraway places, farther away places. All those things factor in, in our, our response times.
And I will say, out of roughly a four hundred and some hospital transfers, forty-five of those require lights and sirens. I'll have to verify those numbers to be accurate, but it's, it's, there's a very large difference.
I understand.
Of those that we took emergent.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Last note, I guess, on the transfers, too, especially those to Augusta, is when those crews run the six or eight hours coming back, they, they require some downtime. So they're still gonna answer calls here, but we can't just put them back on the road again.
Now, are, are, excuse me, Ms. Chair, are, are the ones being transferred to Augusta, are those just, are those burn?
No, sir.
Or they're just?
No, sir.
They transfer us all the way to.
What's the word they use, what's that word they use, what's that word?
They're not all burned.
Uh-huh.
That is our closest to us.
Right.
Yeah.
Where come they are burned patients, but they are special resources, they're special, um, key gators.
Right, right.
Specialty services.
Right, right, okay. Understood.
And if Savannah's closed?
Right.
You have to go to the next.
The hospital, basically, is, is trying to locate the nearest facility that'll accept them for that level of care they need. Dodge County, we've had to go to Dodge County before. Pretty good turnaround.
Oh, yeah.
That's the reason we're trying to work with the hospital, 'cause I'll have to see if they.
Right.
'Cause obviously, it's miles on the ambulances and.
Yeah.
Out of purpose.
Thank you for what you do.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Board appointments, am I there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
You'll give them.
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, we had, had an ad in the paper on September twenty-first and twenty-eighth, had two, two positions for the hospital authority, and didn't receive a lot of applicants, but we did, we do have two, two board members, current board members, that, you know, let us know that they would like to be reappointed, and if, you want me to do them one at a time?
Yes, sir, if you will, please.
Okay. Well, I, we did communicate through email with Commissioner, the committee, Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Walden and myself. And our recommendation is to reappoint Ms. Kimberly Ryan for another three-year term.
Ms. Kim Ryan, we recommend for another three-year term, would you entertain a motion?
Yes, sir, I'll make a motion that we approve to appoint Ms. Kimberly Ryan back to the hospital authority board.
Second. Motion second, we reappoint Ms. Kim Ryan in for discussion. All in favor, I show our hands, please. Ryan's reported, thank you, sir, next one?
And next, we have the same for Ms. Stephanie Osteen. She'd like to be reappointed, and that's the recommendation of the committee.
Okay, chair, entertain a motion.
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman, I make a motion, we appoint Stephanie Osteen to the hospital authority.
Second.
Motion second, for discussion, all in favor, I show our hands, please. Ms. Stephanie Osteen, reappointed. Next one?
That was, that was, it was just.
Thank you, sir. Administrative report.
One thing is that luckily, Ian did not visit us, at least wisely, but you did enter into a state of emergency in the county as a result of that, we just need to rescind that, sir, tonight, officially, if we.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we rescind the resolution that was approved.
Anybody happy to make a second?
Second.
Motion second, we rescind the state of emergency.
We didn't need it.
All in favor, show of hands, all right. Thank you, sir.
The other thing, Ms. Chairman, as I did give you a copy of a letter we received from the city of Midway requesting the road department to not grade that portion of Lake Shore Road from Lake Gale Road to the lift station, and as you know, we do that as contract to those entities anyway, so I will notify Mr. Wells that, to take that off of that maintenance list.
Yes, that, Mr. Brown, is that D Road?
Yes, sir.
D Road.
Leave.
Yeah.
Commissioner, you had an announcement there, too?
Yeah, I, I just sent you all a text, I received a flyer from, from Pastor Deason at the manor house. You know, they going to support the hurricane victims down in Florida, they going to have a truck loaded up and ready to go on Saturday, so if you find it in your heart to support this great effort, just make your supplies, if, if you would, over to the manor house any day during the week, and they going to load it up and take it down there on Friday. So, there's more information on the flyer, I just sent it to you, and so, just appreciating the support for this effort. I mean, it's, it's them today, it could be us tomorrow, so.
Yes.
Just grateful, and the Lord bless you that you can help someone, I, true believer that you should. Thank you.
Got one other question for Mr. Brown. Stay where you at, where you at? Need to get a good report on Miller Park.
I'll have to reach back out to the engineer and talk to him.
Please do, because it's looking trashy down there.
Okay.
Very trashy.
Okay.
I know we have to deal with that old gumbo clay and everything, but there's no action at all.
Okay, I'll, I'll definitely follow up tomorrow on that.
Thank you.
That's all for the good order. Chairman, take the motion to adjourn.
A move, Ms. Chairman, second.
All in favor? Have a great evening.
Good week.